Good evening and welcome to the April meeting of the Mira Mesa Town Council. My name is Barry Voss, I'm the president. Jeff Stevens, our secretary is here. Dorothy Lorenz, board member. It's a huge number of people tonight, there's Pam Stevens, my first vice president. I'm sure there are a few others here that I'm not seeing with the large number of people in attendance. There's Danielle Austin. Jennifer Kowalvik. Welcome everyone, there's Conshen. We are going to have a very busy meeting tonight, so I'm not going to take up a lot of time. We will begin as we always do, seeing if our first responders are present. We always like to give them the opportunity to get in and out as they respond to things in the community. Is there anyone here from San Diego Police Department? Okay, moving on, San Diego Fire Department.
Hi, can you hear me?
There you are, I'm sorry. Officer Santos, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're kind of breaking up a little bit.
Okay, let me step out, hold on.
You need to, we can hear you, but you need to unmute yourself on Zoom, I can't.
Can you guys hear me now? Yeah, much better.
All right, how is everyone doing? Can you hear me? All right, I know that you guys have a very busy meeting this evening, so I just wanted to come on and remind everyone for the month of April, it's the distracted driving awareness month. We were going to be doing some extra patrol, make sure that no one is using their cell phones. So I know that we get a lot of questions about, well, what if we're at a light and it's red? Can we get on our phones? That's still against the law. But please make sure if you need a text or if you need to look up directions or make a phone call, pull over safely. It is spring break for a lot of kiddos right now and it's getting warm out, so be careful when you guys are out there, okay? And I know, like I said, you guys have a busy, busy meeting, so I'll take any questions really fast for you guys, if anyone has anything for me. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you for being here.
Any questions for me?
All right, thanks so much. Okay, moving on to San Diego Fire Department, Captain Ramondo.
I see he's signed in, but I don't see him on screen, on my screen. How about you, Barry?
No. I'm not seeing him, I wonder if he got called away.
It's possible, we can, if he appears, we can take him a little bit later.
Okay, one last call, Captain Ramondo, are you here? All right. Normally I do a president's report, at this time I'm going to keep it very, very short. As you know, the town council tries to address all of the issues that are currently of high priority in the community. We'll be doing that with our first presentation tonight, but I also want to mention that we have a meeting set up this week with the offices that address homelessness in the city. They will be here in Mira Mesa touring some of the areas where we tend to have a congregation of homeless residents and talking about ways that they can come into our community and help us address the situation. So once we meet, we'll be reaching out to the community, probably looking for volunteers to help us with future projects. Another item that is at the top of everyone's list tonight is the traffic changes on Gold Coast between Parkdale and Empress. So I want to go ahead and step aside and introduce Jorge Riveros, Director of City's Transportation Department. He is here tonight with several other people from the city to talk to us about the new bike arrangements. Tell us everything about the project and take your questions. So let me step back and let Mr. Riveros step in and begin the presentation.
Thank you, good evening. Hi, my name is Jorge Riveros, I am the Director of Transportation for the City of San Diego. And really, I just want to start off on behalf of myself and the department. You know, we want to offer our sincerest apologies on how this project was implemented, you know, without any outreach or education with the community. Plain and simple, we messed up. But we're looking internally at our process to make sure that going forward, we vet these things in a better way. As a result of that, as a result of the issues that were, that happened here in this community, we've put, placed all new ABL projects on hold. You know, our intent in the Transportation Department and our promise is to deliver the best and the safest services and transportation facilities to all San Diegans and visitors. It's also our intent for all San Diegans and all communities to have a voice in what we do here. So please believe me when I say that we will strive to do better. Now, here in transportation, we're working on a plan to be better communicators going forward. And we also want to acknowledge that we need to build trust back from the, you know, the disappointing relationship we created by our lack of communication and the issue we created for this particular community. But we want to make sure that we begin a good partnership with you all now, today. So I'm certain that the people here today possibly represent a smaller subset of the community and we want to make sure that our messages get through to as many as possible out there. So let us know how we can best work with you all to get those messages to your community members. And again, let me say how sorry we are for not taking or for not working early on with our most important customers, which is all of you. You know, we're doing our best right now to to address these issues and this is where we're starting, right? We're starting here today with you all on this town council meeting. We've posted some information in the manner of signs out on the street to better understand how the street or these new advisory bike lanes are used. And we'll continue to engage with this community over the next several weeks to best make you comfortable with these new lanes. Just a little bit about these lanes, they are being used in cities across the United States right now. They've been used in Europe for a while. They are used here in California in certain cities. And this is the first time we're using it here in San Diego. So, you know, we acknowledge that there should have been a primer, there should have been some education, some outreach. Again, that falls squarely on us and we're here to apologize profusely for that misstep. But we want to, we want to present some information about these ABLs. And with that, I'll turn it over to Everett Hauser. He can give you a little bit more information about how these, the history of these bike lanes and how they're used. And then, of course, we will defer and see if there's questions or if we want to hold this to the end, we will defer to this panel in this group. So Everett.
Great, thank you Jorge. And if everyone's ready, I'll start the presentation, which can get into some of the more details that I know everyone has a lot of questions about. Okay, can I be allowed to share my screen? I've got a presentation that I can give some visuals.
Just a moment and I will.
Great, thank you. Okay. There we go, everyone's in the PowerPoint. Great, thank you. Okay, so once again, just to echo Director Riveros's apology, our sincere apologies that we did not conduct the proper outreach in advance of this installation. We will do better. As noted, signage has been posted and we're going to work with our teams to provide more transparency in our process. So thank you for the opportunity tonight to explain and we want to collaborate with you. So just a bit of background, you know, this is largely a bicycle facility. I'm going to be using a lot of terminology tonight. So this is just a bit of a primer to help you understand. Image on the left is our Bicycle Master Plan cover. It's made up of what are known as four classes of bikes. Class one is a multi-use path, familiar in the area around Lake Miramar, it's multi-use. Next is class two, the bike lane. You see those on Mira Mesa Boulevard. I may be talking a lot about tonight about class threes. Those are called bike routes, present on Flanders and Gold Coast. And the newest ones in 2016 are called fours or separated bikeways, sometimes also called cycle tracks. The largest installation in the city is in the downtown network so far, but it is expanding and more and more coming along as community plan updates are completed. So how did we get here with Gold Coast? Again, beginning our reference point is the current Bicycle Master Plan that was city council adopted in 2013. The green line down here from Parkdale to Empress comprises the Gold Coast Bike Route Network. And you can see as far back in the lower left, a bike route sign here in green. This is from a 2007 preview and then in about 2014, ferros or shared lane markings were added. And this was an innovative treatment at the time to try to convey again the message that this space is shared by motorists and bike riders. So in all instances, you know, traffic control devices are trying to communicate to the users what the situation is. You can also see the 25 mile per hour sign. So this is a residential street, but the Bike Master Plan recognized that Gold Coast is one of the only through parallel streets other than Mira Mesa Boulevard that connects across. And so it was going to be a key destination for people getting through the community. Just a bit more about that, the city has a service with Strava Metro where anyone who records their trips, we know it's just a small set of users, but it's really indicative of how all streets are used throughout the city. And then you can see highlighted here with Gold Coast, again referencing that it's a through connector and not the busier, multi-lane Mira Mesa Boulevard. It's very attractive for riders looking for a little bit more of a low-stress route through the community. So all of this helped influence as we're going along and making our decisions about what treatments to provide on a facility when we have a chance to revisit that facility through our resurfacing program. We do hundreds of miles a year of resurfacing and the bike program typically works on about 40 miles of designed projects in coordination with that resurfacing program. But again, we knew that as a bike route, this is the typical condition. Previously, anyone riding in the street has the ability to take a lane right in the center, avoid the door zone, but it requires this passing maneuver on a street with a shero and the center line, where drivers have to pass over that center line. And some people aren't too comfortable with that. It's, it can be disconcerting, you've seen the passing car come over. So we, as these class three routes and on lower volume, lower speed streets, we were looking towards what innovative treatments we can provide. And thus, we, with the awareness of the growing field of advisory bike lanes, chose this treatment for this particular case. The Full Highway Administration put out a guide back in 2016 showing the conditions on the left, again with a narrow roadway where you don't have enough space to put in a full bike lane on each side. Thus, they're called advisory bike lanes. That's what the dash striping illustrates, that vehicles that need to pass over them can change that lane, come over into the bike lane after yielding to the traffic in front of them. So very common in terms of traditional use of the right-of-way. You yield to those who are ahead of you. When it's safe to pass, you can move over and then you make your pass and then resume your trip. The image on the right is sort of the smaller window that these can operate in. Obviously, as streets with more and more volume, it would not be as appropriate to have this sort of shared condition. But this is why it's largely been used for smaller neighborhood streets, ones that are designated in the Bike Master Plan as bike routes. When streets are larger and carry more through traffic, then you typically have bike lanes or class four separated bikeways. The key other point in part of our decision-making was that, so in order to provide a safe facility, we knew that this was a residential neighborhood and we wanted to retain pre-parking. So that's where, again, there's only a limited amount of space between the curbs and this is where we decided to go in this design direction. Just a quick note for those interested, there are several experiments. Here are the ones across the US about studying the advisory bike lanes and we're going to do that as well as this is deployed. But here are the cities experimenting with advisory bike lanes across the country. And there are several documentations, university-level research and also consulting papers about their use around the world and how they can be applicable in certain situations. And so we've used that guidance to help develop what you see out there today. And I'll now go over a little bit. So again, the main point of an advisory bike lane is the bike lanes are present, but they are skip-striped or dashed, so allow vehicles to enter them when they need to pass other vehicles. The image on the right is a vehicle passing the rider using the center lane. And on the left, you can see the lane dimensions that were there. So still the same width in terms of the overall space between the parked cars, but just a little bit different visual presentation of the striping. Many of you have noticed that the signs were installed today. And so on the image on the right, you can see the drivers using the advisory bike lane to safely pass each other after passing a rider. And hence the guidance from the sign. This is going to be a video, in case anyone hasn't had the chance to come out there, taken yesterday. And nearly to the end, so safety is of paramount concern for the city. We are a Vision Zero city and so we want to eliminate severe and fatal injuries on our streets. And we know that the safest way is when people are traveling slowly. So if there is a crash, that's how you account for human error and hopefully the results are within a human tolerance, a human's tolerance for those situations. So, you know, again, we know that this is a big change, so we are trying to be innovative, but obviously we did not communicate that early enough to get community awareness. And then again, as Jorge mentioned, advisory bike lane deployment will be on hold until we have the opportunity to notify communities in advance of the proposed changes. And we'll be developing additional educational materials to help inform San Diegans about these new lanes and where they may be installed in coordination with community plans. And that concludes the information. The visual information.
Barry, how do you want to handle questions? Do you want people to raise their hands or put their questions in the chat?
I would say either of those. Keeping up with the hands may be a little difficult. If you post the questions in chat, we can get a good look at them and we will present them to the speakers and, you know, that's where we'll go from here. And I know we have some people on Facebook watching. I'm going to keep an eye out for questions there that I can put in the chat. So let me go ahead, we're going to jump in the chats that just came in. So we start with somebody asking, why is there no center line?
Right, so there's no center line because it's the shared lane condition, just as if there was no markings on the street and you would need to drive down the lanes and judge the width of of how you're passing either the non-motorized user in the bike lane or your passing vehicles.
Okay.
At some of the intersections, the center line does return, a shero returns to help guide between those spaces.
Okay, let me jump up, Jeff Dosick.
You still muted? Hi, thank you. Thanks very much. I've been commuting, bike commuting on this road for about 25, 30 years now and it's an improvement, thank you very much. It's safer to ride now, thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. We're going to jump back to chat, there are a couple of versions of this next question, so I'll just summarize it. There is a lot of concern about the, they're calling it the eventuality of head-on collisions. Perhaps you can speak to that.
Well, again, that's part of our hope with our efforts on Vision Zero. We know that humans make mistakes, there will be crashes, but what we hope is that they are of a slower speed, that they are not severe or fatal for any of the participants.
Okay, we'll go back to the audience here, Joe Fratell.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that because we hope that nobody dies there either. I'm just amazed that in the city of San Diego, with all the people that are responsible in the city, that once again, something happened in a community and nobody got notified from the city. I mean, it just makes no sense how you trash our communities with this crap and never notice anybody what's going on. Oh, there it is. You know, it's just like, to hell with the communities, we're going to do what we want from the city and they can just suck it up. I just really, the way we're being treated is just the wrong way to do stuff.
Okay, thanks Joe. We get one from Facebook here, says you say the plan was approved by the city council. When was it approved? How is it possible to implement without informing the city council?
So I think, oh, go ahead, Cory.
Yeah, I think, I think to be clear, what was approved was the Bicycle Master Plan. That's what Everett was referring to in 2013, the Bicycle Master Plan was approved by the city council and not necessarily the advisory bike lanes. As Everett pointed out, there's been a progression and evolution of how we look at bike lanes. This is just one of those evolutions, the advisory bike lane that has been experimented in the country. Again, used in Europe, experimented here in the United States. So it was one more tool to analyze and see how it would operate here. Again, completely understand the frustration, you know, that it wasn't rolled out with a good educational and outreach program. I mean, again, we're owning that for sure. Where we, I said, we messed up, we are owning that. And again, we're hopeful that going forward, and I mean, you know, this is kind of reparations here, we want to make sure that going forward, we are working with your community, not only this community, but all communities, right? I want to make sure that all communities where we might be implementing, we want to make sure that we're innovative, we want to make sure that we progress in terms of what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish, move towards whatever it said was Vision Zero. You know, limit the amount of severe or serious injuries and fatalities in the city. I'm sorry.
That was someone off mute.
Oh, and so anyway, we, you know, we want to make sure that we limit all those things. But again, we do need to acknowledge we have to be better communicators. We know we have a plan going forward, but right now what we need to do is really help our, build our relationship and our trust with this community. So again, we're looking for, you know, some help here. We want to make sure that we're well-informed going forward with this, with this plan and really work with this community and get the message out to all the members in Mira Mesa.
Go ahead and take one from chat now. Videos are showing that many cars are parking on the sidewalk now in that area, causing issues with people walking. What's being done to enforce cars not parking on the sidewalk?
I think that's a question more for your first speaker, the PD, in terms of blocking the sidewalk.
I guess it is have you all coordinated with PD for enforcement while people are sorting out the new rules of the road? Because it seems like a lot of people are pulling up onto the curb, onto the sidewalk, not understanding exactly what they're looking at. Have you coordinated with them to perhaps do some outreach, some patrolling?
Yeah, we can certainly reach out with them again to inform them of the new situation and look for vehicles walking the sidewalk.
Let me get two from the Zoom audience, we'll do Alex Elward first.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Alex Elward, I've been a resident for about six years here on the street. So what I'm seeing is, as I'm seeing, we've set up a traffic pattern that has two vehicles with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. They're now driving towards each other in a suicide lane. And, you know, you, it just, I had my Uber driver drop me off from the airport and he asked me, is this a one-lane road? Because that's what it looks like, it's very confusing. Essentially, what we've done is, is people are used to driving between lanes. And now we're asking to drive, oh, on top of a lane where they're straddling a lane. So that's not how we are taught to drive. Additionally, I almost felt like the traffic signs were kind of retaliatory. Today, you put up 15 traffic signs over 1,200 feet of road. So the whole street is now completely polluted with these traffic signs. That image that you put in that shows an error yield to the bikes literally shows the car in an arrow that points to the bike and then puts yield. So the traffic sign doesn't make a whole lot of sense. There's another traffic sign that says it's a two-lane road. There's another traffic sign that says that the road can still be taken fully by the bicyclist. I really don't understand what was wrong with the last usage. So I fully support the bikers in my community. I also support the zero emissions goal of the county, I think that's great. But what was wrong with the class three shallow road that we had? I think the community just wants to return and go back. What I'm hearing is, we're going to be stuck with this whether we want it or not, but that community engagement and that community trust really comes back to, do we get a say in how this looks? So that's my question, are we building that trust back by allowing us the option to revert it back to the bike lane that we had a month ago? Thank you.
All right. So let's see, we have several versions of the same question. Do, were studies done on the traffic patterns and traffic incidents prior to the installation and will comparison be made with traffic incidents since the installation?
Yeah, so certainly the volume of vehicles was a factor in our determination to design the facility for this location. And certainly, ongoing evaluation will be a part of our program as well as monitoring any crash reports to come in.
All right, I believe I saw Joe Ramondo from the Fire Department with his hand up.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Joe Ramondo, I'm the station captain here at Fire Station 38. I've been here for approximately six years now. So I've seen any number of accidents and we use that road frequently. I actually have a few questions and concerns regarding this lane. I understand what we, this is meant for safe bicycle lanes and whatnot, but most of the time we deal with the things that nobody thinks about or the times that we have to deal with where people have to make a decision in a split moment. Most of that includes traffic accidents in the nighttime, where you're going to have bright lights heading towards you and vehicles don't know which way to turn. Normally, we ask people to pull to the right, but sometimes there are things in the way we pull to the left and we have to do things and that's going to confuse, that's going to confuse the drivers. So a couple of questions, have we addressed the drunk and intoxicated drivers? Has that been, has that been studied? As well as night driving and what that does for the patrons? Another concern I have is if people are not allowed to park on the sidewalk as on that video, we frequently get where people open the doors and cars hit it and that's with a two-lane road. So what would happen now if they park, maybe a bicyclist gets taken out or a car hits them as they're going out through that door? So I understand why people are pulling over onto that sidewalk. Are the lines reflective? Because we're introducing a new pattern, do we, can people really notice when the lines change from? Because we're introducing a new pattern. Do we, can people really notice when the lines change from two lanes to one lane? People at nighttime aren't thinking about driving. A lot of times they're, they're not thinking at all and they're intoxicated. We frequently get traffic accidents on Gold Coast at the intersections. Gold Coast, Flanders, all those roads that are through fair so people avoid using Miramesa. Are there, I, I see it's 25 miles an hour is what I heard. That's gonna impact our response times. I'm not sure if this went through the fire department. We haven't heard anything down here at the station. But this will affect, if this gets into our computer for routing, the issue I might have is that if, if it shows us slow enough, we won't even be able to respond to communities in our district before Miramar does. So Miramar may show up closer based on traffic speeds. That's how it's based on speeds and delays. So Miramar, Miramar might show up and we won't even be going to citizens in our own district. So routing is gonna be something we want to work through. And then I'm assuming, again, I'm assuming there's no speed bumps. We, they installed the speed bumps here on New Salem and that's impacted our, our ability to drive quickly to get to scene. So I'm asking, the question is, are you gonna have speed bumps? Hopefully not. Do you have reflective lines? And what, what do you have planned for the eventuality, something's gonna happen with a drunk or intoxicated driver, which we do have frequently?
All right, I see you're unmuted. Do you want to take any of those or all?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, all, all our, all our paint, all our markings are retro reflective. So for sure that they, they will be visible and, and luckily, you know, this is freshly striped. So they will be retro reflective. There will not be any speed humps along this, this stretch of road. You know, as far as, as driving while intoxicated, I mean, obviously, we, we all have to confront that issue, right? As transportation professionals and services professionals. You know, it's, it's something that we struggle with even in our profession to understand how to, you know, combat driving while intoxicated or driving under the influence. You know, we, we hope that in these cases, that, that, these are the kind of installations that help, you know, limit the severity of, of those crashes, right? That's, that's some of the intent as well in doing this. We all know there is somebody who gets behind the wheel who's, who's intoxicated. Maybe he's not even paying attention, like you said, you know, to the, to the markings and things that are out there and, and it's just driving, you know, in this inhibited sort of way. So how we combat that? I mean, you know, I don't think that any of us have a silver bullet for us, not even in the transportation world. You know, we, we try to look for ways to, to address those, those situations. Again, this is one where we hope that it serves as somewhat of a traffic calming. You know, it has a traffic calming situation. But, you know, once somebody's intoxicated, all, all, basically the gloves come off, right? They, they kind of do whatever they want. But we're hoping in the cases where people are, are driving sober and, and they're driving rationally in the way they should, that they, that this is a measure of traffic calming that, that hopes, hopefully limits those, the severity of any sort of crash or incident that may happen. Obviously, we don't want to talk about those. We don't want those to happen. That's the whole idea of Vision Zero is we don't want there to be crashes. We want to move towards that zero needle. But again, we're, we're, you know, we're all trying to do our best and put our best foot forward. This is just another tool that we have that we're, we're using to see how it will work in this community. But certainly, I mean, you know, again, we've talked about what are we gonna do? That's what we're saying. We're, we're gonna take all these questions, all these comments. We're gonna look at them. We want to work with your community. We're gonna work with the leaders in this community, you know, but we want there to be, we, we want it to be a diplomatic, you know, and, and fruitful relationships. So yes, we want to make sure that, you know, going forward that we are working together. Again, looking at these questions, looking at these comments, we're not gonna have the answers for all of them today, but we will get back to you with, with answers on these.
Do you, do you have any mechanism for data tracking for accidents on this section of road?
Yes.
I'm sure that we want to see what the, the impact is. And how we can help provide that information to you guys.
Sure, we, we definitely, we rely on, on, you know, reports from SDPD. Those are what we use to, to understand what's happening, you know, and we definitely do before and after studies. You know, every time we do any changes in, in traffic operations, you know, as engineers, as planners, we make sure that we do before and after studies. We want to, we want to show what the conditions look like before, what's happening after. That's looking at, you know, speeds, looking at volume, looking at the, the crash, the severity. So all that information we will, we will collect.
Good.
I do have a technical question that came in on the chat. Says it is not within the guidelines for traffic calming. The ADT on this road is a minimum 7,500 and safety max is 2,500 at 25 miles per hour.
So there are certainly are different segments of Gold Coast that have different volumes. We know further on the east towards the larger intersections, there is more traffic volume. Our forecast showed for this segment, it was gonna fit within the parameters.
Shawna E.
Hi, yeah. Aside from the safety issues, I'm thinking of senior citizens driving down the road also. But to me, it seems a little bit unethical that the city chose to do this when there have probably, I know I'm probably a good handful over three years, starting three years ago. There are probably hundreds of requests to have other roads fixed in Miramesa. Name, I'm thinking Capricorn and all the streets in that area full of potholes and individual potholes will be filled. And meanwhile, there's, there, there is a whole other group of them 10 yards away and ignored. And that's been three to five years as far as I started paying attention. And it's, it's just funny that the street, that those streets are ignored. However, we'll go and spend the money on something like this. So that kind of tells us a little bit about the city's priorities.
I want to raise my hand.
Everett, do you want to provide clarification about how this bike treatment is accompanied with slurry already scheduled?
Jeremy, so you just alluded to, this was programmed with the city's slurry program, which is just the topical treatment to help street preservation. So we'd get much more mileage out of that overall all across the city. Certainly, the larger reconstruction project for Gold Coast and several other Miramesa streets was a larger project and took several years to gather up all the funding, but that is still in progress. And again, that's further for the east where the road base has been deteriorating. But that's, that's, that's making its way through engineering capital projects as a very large road reconstruction project.
All right. Jeff?
Yeah, so I'm, thank you for the presentation. I guess my one problem with the presentation is that it seemed like your concept of interacting the community is basically to explain what you're doing. And you really do need to listen to the feedback you get because the people who live around here have a little better idea of what that, what that road is like. Now, it looks like this kind of, of design is intended for low-volume, low-speed roads. This particular section of Gold Coast, that is the Gold Coast between Parkdale and Community Ruiz, was studied as part of the Stone Creek Traffic Study and their measurements on that segment of road were 7,500 trips per day. That's where the number that was mentioned previously came from. And that was a 2015 study, so that was before. Oh, did I lose you?
No, someone started sharing their screen.
Okay, hang on a second. I'll, I will turn that off. Okay. Yeah, so that Stone Creek Study was made in 2015, which was before Sock Elementary School opened. So the volume on that street has to be at least 8,000 per day or more. And there are certain times of day, particularly at school, pick up and drop off times when the, when the street can be quite congested. So I mean, it sounds like you, if you were really going by the guidelines during your presentation, you shouldn't have put these, these there. So how do, how do you assess that? And no, under what conditions do you, do you actually build, build these?
Right, so we'll, we'll certainly go back and take a look to see if we can source that, source that study. Took down the name and that will certainly be part of our before and after consideration about this. So I think, I think it certainly is warranted to say, you know, this is, it's, it's paint and thermoplastic. So there is, you know, there is the option to, to return if, if we do find that conditions aren't right for this particular treatment. We try to source it based on, again, bike network, what are the needs of, of riders through an area where the speeds and, and situation in a community. So again, it's all a part of expanding our, our toolset to make improvements across city streets. So again, I'll take a look back to that 2015. We all know that traffic volumes plummeted and disappeared during the beginning of the pandemic and, and much of that has returned, but not all of it because we're all in a Zoom meeting right now, right? And some people are working from home. So the changing traffic conditions is certainly something.
The road based on during the pandemic? I mean, is that, is that what happened here?
No, I didn't say that. Just, just that, you know, traffic volumes change. And so in, in this shorter segment, it may, it may have been lower. So it was basically, we were looking at a forecast from the San Diego Association of Governments. But certainly, again, we'll take it into consideration if, if the volume's changed, something, do something post. We know volumes are increasing as people are returning to work, but not everyone's returning to work. So that's part of the overall situation in evaluating how these conditions are, you know, being, being used on the ground and what they're responding to.
Okay, so I'll send you a reference of the traffic study.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, and if I could say, there, there's now a school there. And additionally, you're opening up three routes, which is gonna use the same Jonas Salk School, and that's gonna have 1,800 residents. So that, it's, you can count the cars and maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe we need to put a strip down, count the cars and see what the actual data is today, because I think it's gonna exceed 7,500 cars per day.
All right, Matt Schels.
Hi, thank you for hosting this forum. I, I wanted to make comments. I'm, I'm here on behalf of Bike San Diego, representing our Board of Directors. I'm also a behavioral scientist and I, my expertise is in attention, cognitive control and motor planning. You know, listening to the comments here, reading some online, you know, I, I understand the frustration and confusion that members of the community are experiencing. And to the extent that, you know, this is a new design and unfamiliar to many road users, you know, this is the primary hurdle we have to work on. You know, we're, we're navigating a similar situation with roundabouts. And, you know, when, when we examined some of the research, I, I noticed that one of the links to the studies coming out of San Jose was shared in the chat. When you examine this research, there's several case studies comparing implementation with roads in, in the United States. And they show that road safety has improved in these areas, even in stretches with parked cars. And I, I also wanted to comment, as a bicycle commuter, I use Evergreen Street in Point Loma for my daily commute to my laboratory. Evergreen's part of the new edge lane implementations. And when I ride on the street, you know, I'm, I'm riding not right next to cars. I'm, you know, over a little bit so that I'm avoiding if, you know, a car door swings open. And now that they've added these kind of hashed marks on the street where these lanes are being implemented, you know, I'm kind of riding right on the edge of where these lanes are. And so I've had a lot of interactions where there's a car that approaches from behind me and then, you know, overtakes me on the side. And, you know, in, in practice, it seems like that the way that that maneuver plays out, it's exactly how these edge lanes are suggesting to drivers to move down streets of widths like these. I think, you know, we need to acknowledge the challenges that new street designs impose on our communities. And encountering something unexpected, it, it's jarring and it demands more attentional resources from us. And, you know, as, as humans, we're wired to want to avoid having to engage more attention and more cognitive effort. We, we also need to acknowledge that we're also in an epidemic of increasing fatalities for pedestrians and cyclists, something that's been growing over the past 10 years. You know, obviously, our business as usual has not really addressed this problem. And to, to that extent, you know, Bike San Diego supports the city for trying something new to address these problems. You know, if, if these changes lead to drivers having slowed down, then, you know, some of the desired effect may already have been achieved with only paint, paint treatments when, you know, some other strategies have not served slowdown traffic speeds, particularly in our residential communities. So, you know, the, the last thing I want to say is, you know, going to a design manual, I haven't seen the link shared. I'll post it after my comment, but there's a design manual about these edge lane roads. And it says, one of the biggest kind of things that needs to be done for, you know, successful implementation is education. And so to the extent that the city can work with communities to help get out the word about how these work and what, what we can expect and, you know, see them play out. I, you know, highly encourage the city to do all that they can in terms of helping get the news out. And so, you know, once again, thanks for hosting this town council where, you know, there's an opportunity for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nicole Burgess?
Thank you, Vori, and the Mayor Mesa Town Council and Everett and Jorge for being here and presenting on this. Nicole Burgess, I live in Point Loma and so I appreciate the time to have an, have an input here. I also sit and join the Vision Zero Task Force in the city of San Diego, and this is a fabulous strategy. I'm an active commuter and have property in Miramar, so I do ride through the area, all the way up to Escondido to visit my mom. So when these kind of facilities, you know, I, I understand change is difficult, but as a property owner, just for those of you, I know there's a lot of you that live out on Gold Coast and in the area and we're talking about traffic. So Evergreen in Point Loma is gonna get these same kind of edge lanes. And for me, as a property owner, this has to be the most positive, beautiful story for you because the traffic is gonna calm down. We have cars that are racing through our, our streets all over our city, not just in Point Loma, not just in Miramesa, but on Gold Coast. You're talking about the dangers of car drivers. That's what, exactly what we're talking about. So we need to slow the traffic down. We need to take a minute to get through our neighborhoods and maybe if where that is not fast enough for you, you won't travel through there. So those parking spots aren't changing. Those parking spots are there for those parking spots for people to be in. Our streets for a bike rider, I could feel the, I haven't been in one of these edge lanes in California yet, but I have visited them in Netherlands. And I, I am imagining that most of the people on this Zoom call have never experienced these edge lanes. But believe it or not, I've, I learned today that Netherlands actually has more edge lanes than typical bike lanes. So like, it is proven, it's amazing source. It's like, you go down these rural roads that are only 15 feet wide and, and they have bike facilities for you. It's amazing. It's like this, when you showed the video, I actually felt this like ease drop from that shero. And what Matt is talking about is so real that you have a striped yellow line. And if anybody comes in on Bacon Street to Ocean Beach, you know, going only 10 miles per hour as a bike rider, the last thing I want to hold, do is hold a driver's up and have them honking and, and not feeling comfortable to pass over that double yellow line to know that they can actually pass me. And so they skim by me so quick or they are just revving to get by me so quickly. And it's, it's just an uncomfortable feeling. And then just lastly, I'm a, I, I rode my kids to school for six years and had 20-plus kids riding to school. Three schools is why we put this kind of facility on this type of roadway, because we want our youth, our youth. We have to escape the car. They're ready to. They've, they're getting on e-bikes. If you look at Encinitas, they're riding e-bikes to school. Let's give them the safe facility. Let's give them the option to go there. Let's eliminate some of those cars for that traffic, for the, for the residents there. For you, I, I hope you love this infrastructure because it's going to make your neighborhood. For you, I I hope you love this infrastructure because it's going to make your neighborhood quieter and safer for you to walk and be around. So I I ask you to all just be mindful of um judgment before you actually get to test it and. And really support the city's efforts. And if I could just have one wish, I would have wished that we never implemented sherros and we went to Edel. Years ago, twenty years ago. Uh, thank you for letting me comment. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Nicole. Marvin Miles.
You know, we have had so many wonderful presentations all about how the Netherlands are so much better. And many of us have traveled there, guess what? That was rebuilt after World War Two. I'm just telling you, this is one of those cases that. I think there's a reason, and this is one of the things that City doesn't really talk about, but it says that bikes are more important than people with cars. That's. Clear on this, and they haven't said they're not going to come back and do this. They just are upset that they basically didn't. Remember to talk to people in the community, and we've had this discussion in Scripps Ranch and in Miramasa. And I think it's one of those cases that, again, so we're gonna say. Cars and people are number two and bikes are more important. So I just think that that's really, uh, this is again, one more time, the bike coalition is a. Very, very powerful coalition in our city. And I think this is time to really take a look at that. And I know you guys are all. You know, into this mass transit and all the rest of that stuff. I'm telling you, I I I don't agree with it. When I sit down a couple of planning groups then. You know, I don't think that our vast majority people think this is a really great idea. And I know that. You know, everybody thinks this is all great, Nicole, but bottom line comes out to, I don't agree. And. So don't put it on the on the police department. It's one of those things is that, why did you do it without notifying the community? This is the largest, Miramasa happens to be the largest suburb in all of the city of San Diego, and I kind of can't imagine that you would have. Not about talking. So let's let's have a nice conversation.
Thanks, Mar. Jacob Mandell.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi there, my name is Jacob Mandell, and I'm a cyclist in your community as well as a Vision Zero advocate. Thank you so much for the uh Transportation Department for for being here today, and I just want to quickly say that I am. Extremely supportive of these edge lanes, and I hope that the city uh will reconsider its decision on pausing these these very important improvements. Uh to our neighborhoods. Uh, you know, as a cyclist, I I I heard that somebody earlier on asked the question, what was wrong with the uh. The sherros in the road, and I can tell you as a cyclist, those sherros are not very safe for me as a cyclist to be riding in the street. I get. Passed very closely, people honking at me, and I don't want to be blocking your way as a driver, nor do I want to be sitting in front of you, you know? I I think that the, I really hope that the city will reconsider its decision to pause this, you know, I granted, I I understand the reasoning behind. Uh wanting to do more outreach, but the city did more outreach, and the city has been uh, you know. Uh, this, these plans have been in place since twenty thirteen. I hope that the city will reconsider its decision. And uh very supportive of these edge lanes. Thank you so much uh for the Transportation Department. Hope that you will continue to build them throughout the city. Thanks.
Owen Murray.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm a Miramasa resident for ten years now. I live down towards the other end of Gold Coast, but I am also a cyclist. And. I haven't had a chance to ride this road yet, but I will as soon as I'm back home on Wednesday. But my friends that do ride have said this is more dangerous, not the other way around. Also, the other thing that really concerns me is that both the Miramasa Neighbors Channel has been inundated with people that are concerned. Just this past Saturday, and uh Chief Ramen Ramundo might be able to attest to this, we had two really serious critical car accidents. On Miramasa Boulevard. Miramasa is a really heavy commuter town. It is not just residents that use this road. People use this road to skate from the eight oh five to the fifteen. Weaving in and out. It's really common for people to do that. Most of my neighbors don't take Gold Coast anymore because of commuter traffic. Coming from the western side of Miramasa on it. Additionally, I'm really disappointed from the city transportation people for not having your numbers. I'm I'm in the private sector. If I ever didn't have my numbers, I'd be fired tomorrow. You should have your numbers ready. Everybody that I've talked to in private sector with the development has said that this road is three to five times the average daily traffic level. There are kids on this road, somebody's going to get killed. I am, as a cyclist, very empathetic to my neighbors that live all around the city. But Miramasa is one of the best places in town to live if you're a cyclist, because we have Miramar Lake. We have the bike path along fifty six. There are plenty of ways to ride your bike. Now, as a commuter, I understand that we need to do better, but nobody, not even Chris K was notified of this. So the idea that there's been communication and trans transparency is laughable. It's downright laughable. And those are two of the pillars in Mayor Mayor Gloria's. Infrastructure bills. That's what he says. I'd like to see some accountability, and I'd like to see one of you two that are here tonight resign from your position. Because honestly, it's just disrespectful to the neighborhood to tell us that you hope we'll accept it. It's it's just not, it's a nonstarter for most residents. People are really, really concerned that their kids are going to get killed. Thank you.
Honor and Pande.
Thank you for the opportunity here. Uh, and I want to apologize, I'm not a citizen of the community, but I have. I'm a professor of civil engineering at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. And I've done some extensive research, not in Netherlands, not in Australia, and we've looked at Australian data. But we've done studies on this in suburban towns in the whole of United States. And we looked at eleven different facilities that had enough collision data five years before and three years after. And what we found was that actually head-on collisions were down, overall collisions were down. In fact, overall collisions were. Down forty four percent on roadways where these treatments were implemented. And I'll tell you why that might happen. You know, a lot of time, we we all know that collisions are increasing, fatalities are increasing throughout our country. And why is that happening? It's happening because a lot of times we're not paying attention when we are driving on the road. And I'm saying we. Because I'm a driver myself, I'm a cyclist as well, but I know that sometimes when we're driving, we're not hundred percent, we're looking at our screens. And I think there is no better thing for the drivers to be paying attention on the road when you have the fear of the oncoming traffic. So I think these edge lane roads, and then there was, so that's why I think they turn out to be safer because they force the drivers to pay attention. That's one factor. And the other thing is that it was mentioned that this road is used by commuters. And I think, wouldn't that be nice for the neighborhood roads to be left for the neighborhoods? I think that'll be a good thing for the for your neighborhood. If you're concerned about the commuter traffic, I think this is actually gonna. So so all I'm trying to say here is that this is actually not to make the drivers unsafe. It's actually gonna. Increase the inconvenience of the drivers for a little while, and that inconvenience, little bit of inconvenience, actually would make the rail safer for everybody. The traffic down. And uh, and yeah, so basically, that's a good compromise for us to have. Where we don't take away parking, we still provide the same infrastructure for for all the modes that we have out there. So that's my two cents on. This, I've done some research, I've dropped the link there. I'll drop in my Twitter, thank you guys for the opportunity to come.
Thank you. Danny Sola.
Yeah, hey, yeah, hi, how you doing? Um, I've been a resident member since nineteen eighty four, and you know, there's this comment's been made that people that don't live here. You know, and they really understand, you know, the memory of traffic. And, you know, a lot of. When uh the other people that commented about, you know, people take the backroads and the people that've been here a while understand the backroads. And how much traffic there is. And, you know, it just, it gets hectic on the backroads because they're trying to avoid Mirabeau Boulevard. And then we have uh three routes coming around, and you're going to have more cars on the road. In that area that they that they painted this new whatever bike lanes or whatever you call it. It just doesn't make sense. And for for the city, not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say exactly what the other people said, not not notify Chris Kate. Not notify, you know, the local fire department, anybody. It just doesn't make sense. And then. There's a comment from one of the guys doing the presentation saying, well, humans will make, you know, they'll they'll make mistakes on the road. And, you know, you know, accidents may happen. Those accidents might be deaths. They might be deaths, and we're going to accept that? That's ridiculous. I'm sorry. That's my two cents. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Um, we did have a question about what other areas, I know that the program is paused now. But it was mentioned that some of these areas were already in a planned document that exists. What other areas of Miramasa have been identified for future. Refitting if this program does continue to go forward.
So actually, it's probably very limited for Miramasa. Most of your streets are designated with class two bike lanes. Uh, the major roads, as I showed on the map, there's a limited stretch that was green uh as the bike route. And that's where these uh type of facilities qualify for. So. Um, again, we we in the bike program look to um do our designs, make improvements uh anywhere we get the opportunity to. But but it does have to meet the criteria and 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 the plan, so can't speak to anything else for the at this time.
Okay. I think we may have covered pretty much the topics that are here. All right, um, if anyone else has a question in the chat room, please put your hand up now. And I'm looking there.
I just, I just want to ask for a commitment from the city on when they'll be able to publish the statistics, because. I think without having any data, you're just completely uninformed.
Yeah, certainly, we'll we'll connect a a post uh installation count, and that will include the vehicle volumes. Pedestrian and and bicycle traffic volumes as well.
Okay, and just to wrap up, um, I thank you all for coming in and. Leading off with the apologies for the lack of communication. I see a lot of the comments on Facebook and in the chat room. Um, to summarize, we were the guinea pig. That's why we weren't told, and this is a a huge perception that comes out of this project. So we are really looking forward to you taking advantage of this opportunity and working more closely, especially with groups like the planning group. Who are in the midst of a community plan update to see if we can. Work on doing a little better with the communication. And I, my final question will be. This is in place. When can you come give us updates and statistics, perhaps come to either a town council meeting or a planning group meeting? And give us updates.
Well, certainly, thank you again for letting us be here and present. And again, our, you know, our profuse apologies, you know, it said we were. It was not done in the right way. Um, what we will do is we'll go back, uh confer with with Mayor's office and make sure that we have all the right information. And then come back to as quickly as we can. I mean, I I don't want, you know, obviously, I'm not saying two or three weeks from now. I'm saying. Within days, within the next week or so, making sure that we're working with your community. Um, you know, I I I just want to. Want that to be clear. I know that we don't want to, we're not here to talk to you about what's going to happen. We want to work with you. Right? So we don't want to talk at you. We want to work with you. We made a mistake. We're we're, you know, we learned our lesson. We're going to go back and and we're going to make sure that we're working with the community. Um, and I said, we want to look at all this information that that has been posted here, the comments. Want to make sure that we're answering these questions. Um, you know, so again, we we thank you for your time. Uh, you know, I think that that there's a lot of opportunity to do a better work here. And and again, we want to make sure that. Uh, we give opportunities to all our our, you know, users of of the roadway and and, you know, within the public right of way. So. Our pedestrians, our bicyclists, our our vehicle, our transit, they're they're all equally important to us. We want to make sure that there's safe mobility for everybody. Um, that there's uh, you know, safe and reliable mobility for everybody. So. The, believe me, there's no intent to prioritize one or the other over the other. It's how do we balance the needs of everybody and and knowing that we have. People who make different choices, right? We we want to be uh, you know. Fully aware that people make different choices based on their, on their uh, you know, situations or their preferences. And that's all we're trying to do. We want to make sure that when we say transportation, we're holistic. Uh, you know, that's the best way to look at it and and make sure that, you know, all our members, all ages, all abilities are safe when they get on our. Our transportation network. That's really what it comes down to at the end of the day for us.
Well, I do appreciate you all coming out um on very quick notice, and I know Jeff Stevens is here. He is the Chair of the Planning Group. He and I both make a commitment to you that if you want to be out here again to speak with us as soon as possible. We will both make time in our agendas to have you come out and meet with the community, and we will let the community know that you will be back. And work through this.
Happy, happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So we will go ahead and end this session for now. Um, we know that traffic engineering and. All the other departments involved will be out again very soon, and we will get some updates. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next program, which is the Miramar College Facilities Plan. Is Brett Bell still here with us?
I'm still here.
Excellent. We're going to turn this over to you now. Thank you for waiting.
You're welcome, Barry. Um, thank you, Barry, and thank you, uh, Miramasa Town Council. Uh, my name is Brett Bell. I'm the Vice President of Administrative Services at San Diego Miramar College. Um, I'm here to present to you um the progress of our facility plan. Um, considering that our existing facility plan is out of date and all but complete. Um, we have um engaged an external architectural consultant. To assist the college in this planning document that will take us through the year twenty thirty five. Um, Jeff, if you could, please, may I share my screen to show a presentation?
Here you go.
Thank you, Jeff. So, um. Uh, Jeff, I can see you. Is this presentation um up and and readily readily viewable?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, great. So this is an abbreviated um slideshow of of where we stand with our facility path to twenty thirty five. As I mentioned before, our existing facility plan is all but completed, and we're working on this to take us. Um, into the future at Miramar College. Uh, this plan, um, and the development of the plan began began last July. Um, and is expected to complete um by June of this year with the plan going before our Board of Trustees for final approval. This plan um has been managed by our colleges president's cabinet, and I believe President Lundberg has been here to your. Town Council to give you periodic updates on on where we have been and where we are going with this plan. We have engaged multiple groups on our campus to develop this plan from our governance committees to the individual schools. Um, um, and also including our Hourglass Joint Use Committee. Um, that helps us manage the joint use facility with Hourglass Park and the San Diego Park and Recreation Department. This plan. Um, is is rooted in um five major goals. Those goals um. Talk about and express our need that this plan be complimentary um to all of the existing plans. That are currently in place on campus, and those plans focus around our strategic goals into the future. So um it's very important to us to make sure that these plans are also integrated with initiatives that are moving. Through our college to assist our students and their success in either career or transfer goals. In their future. We also um have a major goal that this plan be agile. Um, and this has arisen from the recent um effects and impact of the COVID pandemic. Uh, and where it was clear that we had to quickly be able to change how we delivered education. Um, in in different modalities and different areas on campus and provide services in different modalities and different areas on campus. So this plan moving forward allows for that agility and flexibility. One of the other major components of our our planning process is to retain the the quality of beauty on our campus. Um, I think for any of you that have been our campus, you you quickly note um how um. Well, um, the the campus is taken care of, how new the buildings are, what the landscaping looks like. Um, it 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 rivals um any college um in the area and in the state. Lastly, um, this plan must be implementable. Um, we we need to be able to make sure that. Whatever we design in this plan um is is easily implementable and establishes a long range goal. That uh accommodates the growth that we project for our college. This slide gives you a little bit context of where Miramar lies within the San Diego Community College District. This area in teal right here, the far north of our district, represents the service area of, of Miramar College. That service area is right above the service area that is represented and by Mesa College. And then at the very bottom of this, in downtown San Diego, is, is the area of our district that is represented by City College. What this service area map is noting is something very unique is that 49% of our population at Miramar College comes from outside of our service area. So that tells us that Miramar College, as it's currently developed and planned, is attracting students from all over the, the, the city of San Diego. This plan is based in data. And that data includes statistics of looking at where our, when our college classes are offered. And we see that 68% of our classes and instruction occur during the daytime. What type of students are on Miramar College campus? Miramar is unique in that 52% of our students are male. I mean, that's a high statistically speaking for a community college. It's primarily due to the fact that we are a regional public safety training academy. And that academy draws more males than females. We serve 90% US citizens on our college campus. And 59% of our students receive some type of financial aid. 29% of our students currently are full time and 80% or 79% are, are part time. So that's a quick overview of the demographics of our students. In putting this plan together, we noted both challenges and opportunities for this plan looking into 2035. Some of the most significant challenges that we have is that currently the entrance to the college is, is met with parking lots and, and it, and the back end of many of our buildings. So we're not showing our, our best side once you enter the college from Black Mountain Road. So we needed to fix that. Some of the other challenges that we encounter is that the entrances or thresholds to the main part of campus are through two of our largest buildings, the liberal arts building and the math and business building. And we wanted to make that threshold and entrance a bit more welcoming to the community and to our students. The open spaces on campus were segregated and not easily connected. And they didn't make sense between one another. So we needed to find a way to bring those open spaces together and connect the north and south part of campus. And then lastly, our athletics division within the instruction department is experiencing growth and currently shares all of their facilities with Park and Rec. So we desperately need some facilities for athletics that are college only facilities and not shared so that we can meet the needs of our expanding facilities operation, excuse me, our, our expanding exercise science classes. Those opportunities that we're seeing to address these challenges are to add a forward facing performing arts center and gallery to the west end of the college, which is represented here. We're looking at some demolition that removes some older buildings and creates a unified outdoor space to bring both the north and south campus together. And we're looking at replacing, since some of our parking lots will be demolished to make way for new buildings, we're looking at building an additional parking structure on the south end of campus. Those recommendations are illustrated here in these three infographics, celebrating the sense of arrival. This is north, south, west and east. This is the new performing arts and English center and gallery that will be forward facing to the Miramar Mesa community. In addition to that, we have a new STEM center that will be north facing to the community. So that is our attempt to show the, the, the front door of our campus, so to speak, to the community and to our students. We're also looking at strengthening the connection between the south and north end of our campus by creating more unified open space that will allow students to not have to cross streets or areas where vehicles are crossing back and forth. That allows them easy access to both sides of campus. And then lastly, we're designing multiple nodes that allow students, staff and faculty to find comfortable outdoor spaces to meet and conduct in both formal and informal areas. In, in all of the meetings that we had across campus, one of the primary comments that we heard was that there's no place on campus for students to sit outside in the shade and either study or meet or, or see friends. So we're, we're creating several opportunities for this to occur in the landscaping plan that accompanies this facility plan. This slide here represents the, the major additions to our campus of the hard, hardscape buildings. So here's Hillary Drive for your orientation. Here's Black Mountain Road and here is Gold Coast. Here's the I-15. So the, the buildings that you see in teal on this slide are new buildings. So I'll start at the north end of campus where we will be designing and building a STEM center, science, technology, engineering and math, that will be a complement to the nearby sciences building. This particular building will include a, what we call a rec lab that will allow for entrepreneurial activities and lab guided lab facilities for students to, to work in a novel and entrepreneurial environment, especially in the, in the STEM fields. Moving over to the west end of campus off of Black Mountain Road, these combination of buildings represent a new performing arts center and then a gallery that is forward facing. And that gallery will be a student gallery. And then behind that will be an English building that is co-located with the existing liberal arts building to create a liberal arts precinct that would include the performing arts center, English and gallery. Moving on to the center of campus to enhance that welcoming front door aspect that I talked about in the beginning, we are designing and building a welcome center that will engage and welcome visitors and new students to our campus and will provide all of the onboarding and new student services that are expected by our students and our community at the very front of our campus. It's not buried in the center or at the back of our campus. So it'll be very easily located and front and center. Moving to the south end of campus, considering that our exercise, science and athletics departments are growing and adding new sports and they do not have a college only facility. We're proposing a new building that will include training facilities for our growing sports programs. We, it will include yoga studios for our growing yoga program that, that trains instructors for the, the, for workforce development. And it will also have college classrooms for the exercise, science and athletics departments. At the far south end of campus in this area here on an existing parking lot, we will be building a new parking structure with enough parking spaces to replace the parking lots that will be demolished to build the performing arts center and the English building on the west end of campus. Something unique about this particular facility is that we're planning a soccer field to be on the top level of that parking structure. And if you're familiar with our campus, that side of campus is at grade and a very significant grade. So a important feature of this parking structure and soccer or playing field will bridge the gap from Gold Coast to the upper part of campus with a very easy and thoughtful transition that will allow our, our students to be engaged and, and have access to additional playing fields. And then lastly, on the west, excuse me, on the east end of campus, we're proposing a new location for the existing child development center and lab school. This child development center and lab school is experiencing tremendous growth over the past year. We provide childcare and instructional programs for child development programs. This will move the existing facility a bit south and east and create more outdoor space for those lab environments for instructional activities. And those are the major components of the plan as it stands right now for buildings. Of note, what I would like to also share with you is the proposed demolition of existing spaces on campus. So we're proposing demolition of parking lots on the west end of campus to make room for the performing arts and English building. We're proposing demolition of one of the oldest buildings on campus, which is the I building, to make room for the new welcome center. We're proposing demolition of the existing child development center that will be relocated adjacent and to the east of, of the existing location. We're proposing demolition of an existing parking structure on the south end of campus to be replaced with a new parking structure and playing field. And then lastly, we're proposing the demolition of a smaller parking lot on the north end of campus where a new STEM center will be located. Lastly, what I want to share with you is what the landscaping and hardscapes will look like that will join both the, the south and north end of campus. So this particular slide shows us the expansion and redevelopment of the existing compass point, which is the center and heart of our campus. And that currently is a very large open space that doesn't get used quite enough. And particularly that is because of the lack of shade and the lack of seating. So we're proposing a, a minor transition for this area to add shade trees and places where students in the community can meet outdoors. We're proposing a new entry plaza at the west end of campus that will be outdoor and will be able to change depending upon the need. It's co-located with the performing arts center and the gallery. It can be used for community events and, and special events on campus. And it can be used for informal me, meeting and gatherings on campus when it's not used in that formal situation. We're also proposing some redirection and changing of the traffic flow so that our driveways and our roads on campus don't bisect the campus. So a current road that runs across campus this way, that basically cuts our campus in half, will be removed and redirected. And it will allow us to join both the south and north end of campus for pedestrians to walk freely across the campus. On the south end of campus, we're proposing some redevelopment of the existing fields. Those fields suffer two significant problems. One of those problems is their alignments with how the sun sets in relation to the field and how the different positions on the field are set up. So we're going to rearrange those, those alignments so that they don't conflict with the setting sun. Then also, I don't know if you've done any yard work in the Miramar Mesa area, but you know that our soil is very compact and, and hard to dig through. So that has created some drainage problems on the playing field. So we're planning on correcting that with revised top dressings and, and drainage and, and new sods for the playing fields. We are proposing new pickleball courts to complement the existing tennis courts. And we are proposing a new drop off and temporary parking that will be adjacent with our child development center. One of the last concepts that we're looking at adding on the east end of campus is a community garden that will invite community members onto the campus to, along with our existing child development center and exercise, science and nutrition programs, to have a shared space with community garden in areas to provide organic gardening and instruction on campus. So that is the, the major components of our facility redesign. I'm wondering if you all have any questions for me?
Now I'm unmuted. Hi, I'll, I'll start things off by thanking you. I'm Pam Stevens. I'm the first vice president and I am going to be chairing the rest of the meeting because Barry apologized due to her work with tax clients. She needed to, to leave midway through. But we are thrilled to have such a comprehensive report. And I have a feeling maybe we can take a few questions tonight, but we're probably going to need to invite you back for more discussion along the way.
Of course.
And this was wonderful. Jeff and I have lived in Miramar Mesa since 1980. And we remember going to Miramar College when it was all bungalows.
Yeah.
We were part of a Singing Springs mandolin orchestra that was a class there at the time. And, you know, our introduction to Miramar College. I feel a little nostalgic about the I building being proposed for demo since it was one of the first real buildings there. And we've had community meetings and forums there. But the plans for the future sound great. The performing arts center facing the community sounds very exciting. Thank you. Maybe just a couple of quick questions if anybody has anything they'd like to ask. I see Sandra Ambrose.
I think that may be left over from the last.
That leftover, okay.
Sorry, thank you. I didn't have any questions.
Okay. How about you, Jeff? You, your hand is up.
Yeah, just, first of all, it looks, it looks really good. I did have one, I have a question about timetable on it. And also, I wish to know if you're going to be replacing those glaring lights that are currently at the, over the, the hourglass fields with, with better ones. I, I do star parties sometimes at Wagenheim and, and those things are real, are real nuisance.
So yes, we did have a significant discussion with the architects. And the lighting for the hourglass parks is included in the narrative and the need for those, that lighting to be replaced. It's not represented graphically, but we do, we have included it in the narrative so that down the line, when we get to construction phases and design phases, we have documented that.
Okay, what's your timetable?
So this, this plan is scheduled to go to the board by June of this year. And, and then we are up against the Herculean task of, of funding this particular plan. One of the exciting parts about this plan is that we have planned to look at parallel paths on two ways of, of funding this. One would be using the data that we've collected for the need for additional space on campus and applying for additional resources from the statewide community college system. That will be a difficult and long process. What this, a parallel path will allow us, the, the San Diego Community College District, including Miramar College, if needed, go out for an additional general obligation bond that would collect revenues from taxpayers to then fund this facility. If you recall, the, the, the construction that we just completed over the past 10 years was funded entirely from the, the San Diego taxpayers through propositions S and N. Those two general obligations bond, general obligation bonds. Those two general obligations bond, general obligation bonds. Collected over one point six billion dollars district wide. Miramar was able to take advantage of almost five hundred million dollars and completely. Renovate the and build an entirely new campus. So those are the two main pathways for us. I would imagine, Jeff, that that. Financing pathway would would take maybe two, three years to finalize. And then the construction process based upon my experience would be approximately another. Seven to ten years for all of all of those projects. So it is truly a long range plan.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and we will definitely be following along and we look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, moving right along, I am going to do some condensation for our remaining. Agenda, but we have, I know we have an important report from Michael Spencer of Scripps Mesa Fireworks. So he's the next item on the agenda and take it away, Michael.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you can hear me. And another thing is that I do wish I was here with. Better news. The unfortunate thing is there will not be a fireworks show for twenty twenty two. We tried to get Wagenheim, the field that's under construction as a possible site. It offered us an opportunity to have at least four inch shells. The the requirement is that for every inch of shell that you put into the air, you need seventy feet of. Radius around you as protection and fallout zone. So. There's about a seven hundred by seven hundred foot square. At that field, we could have put a four inch shells up there with a two hundred and eighty foot radius. The two hundred sixty foot radius, excuse me, unfortunately. And rightly so, the contractor was unwilling to accept the risk of potential damage to with with a fireworks show there. So we were unable to proceed with Wagenheim as the launch site. We already know that Miramesa High School is off the table because of the membrane roofs. And potential damage to the multipurpose field as well as potential damage to the. Football field, two places that are quite expensive. And again, as a. Parent of a future Miramesa High School student, I I respect their decisions. We did investigate one more site, which was off of Camino. Excuse me, Camino Santa Fe over there by where Three Roots is. And we did a site survey up there. The fact of the matter is there are no gathering points. There are no good viewpoints from anywhere in that area that would have justified spending the amount of money that we would have had. To spend for the show. So. The unfortunate fact of the matter is that without that Wagenheim site. For twenty twenty two, there are no. No fields large enough in Scripps Ranch and Miramesa that allow us the the ability to launch a show. I see some hands. I don't know if there's a residual or.
You know.
Joe?
Yeah, I have a question. You know.
Go ahead, Joe.
Unfortunately, we're gonna miss with the fireworks this year. Next year, we'll have them at Wagenheim. Do you know if there's gonna be a Fourth of July parade this year?
But Michael probably doesn't know the answer to that. Barry and the rest of the Miramesa Town Council Board will be talking about that at our board meeting a week from tonight. It was hard to even talk about that before Michael was able to make his announcement tonight about the fireworks because. What happens with parade and a daytime picnic fun day. Has often been driven by the fireworks and now we are facing. The sad news that we're not doing a fireworks show in Miramesa in twenty twenty two. There is a positive. Did I hear you right, Michael, that Wagenheim would be a possibility for for next year?
If they, if if the contractors remain on schedule, there is a possibility that we can have a show in twenty twenty three. That is definitely what we are hoping for. Or that there will at least be sufficient green space. The good thing is that they are going with actual grass. They're not putting in artificial turf on that field. So. Oh, a lot of kids will have good knees and ankles when they play on that field in the future. I saw a quick question about environmentally friendly options such as drone shows. Drone shows start at about four hundred fifty dollars per drone, which puts a. A fifty drone show, which really cannot even be seen. By much of anything already starting close to thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars. Which is almost double the price of the fireworks show. Laser shows are other things we've looked at. And again, the unfortunate fact of the matter is the audience for. A a laser show becomes in to the point where it would be perhaps at the stadium. So you have a couple, maybe a thousand people able to witness it, not the same. Where we can have a, you know, a community essentially watching the the show. And I see the fire department on my screen right now. He's probably smiling inside despite.
Yeah, I had been wondering about the laser show option. D six Night Market has ended its evening. With a laser show in the past and whether that would be something that might be a possible way to go. But as as you say, it wouldn't be as widespread through the community possibly, but it would be within the area of the park.
Certainly. We're we're doing what we can with the 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 community volunteers that we have. We have twelve people on that team. You know, we put our heads together as best as we can. And the unfortunate fact of the matter is. Fireworks shows are actually among the most cost effective. You know, it would have been. You know, about twenty thousand dollars and almost seven hundred fireworks in twenty minute show. A drone show, we we need that price to come down. And same with laser shows, we need those to be more spectacular where. You know, our our neighbors across the the fifteen would be willing to donate.
Understand.
To us as well. So. Regrettably, that is the situation we have found ourselves in and it's. A lot of a lot of heartache, losing it this. Not nearly as bad as losing it one week ago, but still a frustrating experience.
Exceedingly frustrating. Michael, thank you for your hard work. I know a lot of us. As of the time of this past month's Miramesa Town Council Board meeting. When Michael had come to the board and the report was optimistic about being able to use the Wagenheim location. Despite the fact that it was under construction, under development. I was not all that confident it was really going to be able to happen. So. When we got word from you, Michael, that you were going to be bringing sad news to announce tonight, we understand. We hope for the future. We are going to be having some sort of Miramesa Fourth of July celebration. That the board is going to be talking about and to be determined exactly what it will be prior to.
I knew that.
July. This year's D six event is not the D six Night Market. It's the District Six. Neighborhood Fair in Miramesa Community Park. I believe the hours are twelve noon to five P M. So it will be an afternoon community picnic type event. Our neighbor in Scripps Ranch University Community, University City. Has a daytime Fourth of July picnic, et cetera, that draws the community together. So we will be looking at what we might be able to organize on a fairly short notice that would be something for Miramesa. Michael, if you'd like.
I did see one question. It was whether or not we struggle to meet our funding goals every year. The fact of the matter is, yes, the community donations are not nearly as robust as we would want them to be. We have been lucky. And I will mention the people who have sponsored us. We've been sponsored by Three Roots, Alexandria, Casimir View and Vulcan. And. Without their help for the last few years, we would not have existed in the past. You know, Hanson, they've moved on. Three Roots has moved into that facility. Community funding through donations is less than we would wish for, and now three years in a row. Is gonna make that even more difficult for, I believe, for us to. To drum up the will and support of the community, but we sincerely hope that. When we can have a fireworks show again, the community will be behind us and willing to. To to help us make our funding goals and put together a show for years to come.
Well said, Michael. Are there other questions for Michael out there?
I saw one more. If you have any questions, info at scripps mesa fireworks dot org. Is the fastest way to get to us and it's hooked up to my phone. I will respond quickly.
Excellent.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Michael. I I see. I don't know if the TV news crews that were here primarily for the Edge Lanes issue. Are still actively here and listening, but that. We we appreciate your interest in the Miramesa community and would be welcome any other. Interaction with the greater San Diego community at large, because this is. Miramesa has been one of the few communities that has still done a local fireworks show and we we feel. For what you're doing with us, Michael. So thank you very much. Okay, well, jumping back in and oh, I see see somebody saying you'd like to volunteer. Please get in touch with Michael. M Van, volunteer to help fundraise as well. Excellent. The future holds a fireworks show for the community. We have some other reports. We will try to whip through these as rapidly as we can. There is, well, Miramesa Community Planning Group, Jeff?
Yeah, I'll keep this short. The big thing that's been going on is the community plan update. We asked the city for. An impact analysis on what they're posing, which is a very big change. And. We have not gotten it yet. We are hoping we'll get it by the next meeting, which is on April sixteenth.
Okay. Miramesa Community Recreation Group, Joe Fritschel.
Well, everybody knows Wagenheim is under construction. Unfortunately, they put the bid for Salk. Out to bid and the bid came back, the lowest bid came back more than the money we have allocated for that project. So now, once again, because we delayed everything for two years, we're way short of money for these things. But the good news is Wagenheim will have grass on it. And we will be able to do the fireworks when that project is finished. Other than that, just keep having fun. Get those kids out there. Let them have fun in the in the parks. That's what they're for.
Okay.
Pam, if I could jump in on Joe's report, the Salk funding is going to City Council tomorrow. And then as soon as it's approved and the mayor signs it, then funds can be distributed and we can proceed with the contract. So. Just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Oh, that is excellent news, Michaela. Thank you very much. Okay, jumping back to. The agenda, Miramesa High School, Jennifer Qualvic.
I don't see her here anymore.
Okay, I will just put in on behalf of Miramesa High School overall. The Taste of Miramesa is coming Saturday, April twenty third. It's at Velace Motors. You can go to the Miramesa High School Foundation and get a ticket in advance. For, I believe, thirty five dollars and at the door tickets are forty dollars. This should be a fabulous fundraiser and fun for Miramesa High. Excuse me, and other schools in Miramesa Theater Schools. It's a benefit for local. Miramesa Schools and Miramesa High School Foundation dot org. All the information to sign up, silent auction, food, fun, and our first in-person one. They've done some. Remotely during the pandemic, but this is a return to an in-person celebration. Moving along, we've got, I know. I don't think Ina Gibson is still here. No, it's past library closing time. But the Miramesa Library Events are in the Miramesa Town Council April Newsletter, so you can read those. In the newsletter that's posted on our website. Elected official reports. So we have, let's see, I know Sabrina Bosso had to leave already. I don't believe Bernie is here for a Community College District Board. Denise Torres for City Council member Chris Kate.
Hi, good evening, everyone. For those who have not been attending the Miramesa Town Council, I'm Denise Torres, the community representative for. Miramesa, Sona Valley, and Rancho Penasquitos, representing District Six. Things that happened today at the City Council after legislative recess. First is an independent budget analyst was appointed and that would be Mr. Charles Monica. I can send a link to his profile on the city website. And number two, regarding the residential no-fault eviction moratorium to preserve tendencies during the declared state of emergency. This item did not get a full vote within this council to pass, but it did. Get enough votes to go back for to the council for a second reading in thirty days for continued discussion. That's it from. The district.
Okay, thank you, Denise. And I know, of course, you were also involved in helping pull together our. Edge Lanes presentation. We enjoyed connecting with you on that. Next, we've got is Rob Knudsen here for Brian Mainshine.
Don't think so.
Okay, San Diego Mayor Todd Gloria, Michaela Falk. Any anything else other than what you shared?
Thanks, Pam. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on Gold Coast Drive on behalf of the mayor. So just want to make clear the situation that happened was completely unacceptable and it doesn't reflect. The transparency or the neighborhood focus that our administration strives to achieve. The residents of Miramesa deserve better and as Jorge mentioned, we're working with the department. To restore the trust with the community. And look forward to collaborating with the town council and the planning group on how we can continue our education efforts. This bike treatment has been halted to learn from our mistakes here in Miramesa. So our apologies on behalf of the mayor. And the other thing I wanted to comment on, our office is working with council member on. Denise specifically on the Montango Canyon Fire. And we did an abatement there, almost got about a ton of trash on the Parks and Rec site. And we're going to be meeting with some residents tomorrow just to provide an update. With what the city can do moving forward. So. That's it from the mayor's office. Thank you, Pam.
Hey, thank you, Michaela. Okay, how about County Supervisor Tara Lawson Reamer, Amanda Berry?
Hi, Pam. Good evening, everyone. My name's Amanda Berry. She/her. And I'm a health policy advisor for Supervisor Lawson Reamer at the County of San Diego. Really short update for you all tonight. We are having a webinar on April seventh. To talk about new community enhancement funding through ARPA. It's meant to support nonprofits that were impacted by COVID nineteen. So we're hosting this webinar at one P M and I'll put information in on the chat. So. Please do share it with nonprofits that you know in your community that need funding to support their programs. We also. Have funding for the Neighborhood Reinvestment Program. As well as a small business stimulus grants. So if you know, like, small coffee shops or folks that have less than twenty employees, they can apply. For that funding and our office is always happy to do one-on-ones with folks for how to get funding. And happy to answer any questions about the county. If you have them.
Thank you. Any. I don't, I don't think I see any hands up. So, okay, but thank you very much for that. How about, let's see, I see Jason Berkovich for Representative Scott Peters. Welcome.
Thank you, Pam. My name is Jason Berkovich. I'm with Congressman Scott Peters' office. For those that don't know, Anthony Nguyen, who I know was your community representative for. Almost a decade is sadly not with the congressman's office anymore. He moved on to. Other opportunities that are out there, but I'm happy to be. Is sadly not with the congressman's office anymore, he moved on to other opportunities that are out there, but I'm happy to be representing with you guys. Just a couple of things, it's been fairly active in DC over the last couple of weeks. So you may have heard that last week, the House of Representatives passed legislation to cap. The cost, the out-of-pocket cost for insulin at $35. That now goes to the Senate, we'll see if the Senate takes it up. The other big ones to note are. We had a historical federal funding package that was signed into law by the president last month. The package included seven programs that we requested specifically for San Diego County. Totalling close to $6 billion, that's coming into the 52nd District. Most of those programs involve education and infrastructure, so we're pretty excited about that investment. And then the other big news is that in the middle of last month, on March 15th. President Biden signed Congressman Peters' law, the Stand Up Act. Which helps provide additional resources for schools, administrators, students and teachers. To notice some of the more dangerous signs amongst their students. To try to intervene and get to know some of the problematic students that might be dealing with mental health issues ahead of time. In an effort to stop some of our school shootings. So that's the big news from our end, the last thing, I'll post the link in the chat. The Congressional Art Competition is on an expedited calendar this year, so all entries are due by April 15th. So I'm gonna post those details in the chat, every year we get Mira Mesa high participation. And hopefully it'll get to participation again this year for Mira Mesa High, but remember, our competition due April 15th at 4:00 PM. And with that, I saw Joe's hand go up, so I'd be happy to take a question if he has a question.
Yeah, we have a unique situation here in Mira Mesa where we need some federal funds to help us complete Carroll Canyon Road. By where the cemetery, about 15 or 20 years ago. They pulled a deal with the city council to avoid their responsibility for Carroll Canyon Road. And and right now, the responsibility for building that is resting with the community. And because of the way. The city has taken away the funding for the future in Mira Mesa. We need federal funding to, as an infrastructure project, to build Carroll Canyon Road by the by the cemetery. So that we can get that road open when all this. Construction and stuff is going on, and Jeff may be able to give you a couple more ideas about that.
We were wondering if the new infrastructure package might have funding for a road like that.
So I'm not aware of specifics within the infrastructure package that would cover a road like that, but what the infrastructure package specifically does. Is it gives a lot of flexibility, so local governments and state governments. So most of what the feds are gonna do is the money's gonna be broken down by state and local. And then those pots have to be used on certain projects. I know the prioritization of funding. Is based on some of the socioeconomic factors of the neighborhood, and also based on the age of the infrastructure in that neighborhood. Mira Mesa is, of course, one of our older communities. So those are all gonna be factors, but ultimately, the money will go to the state and the city and the county. And they will be largely in charge of which projects the final funding goes to.
Okay, thank you very much. We also have for State Senator Tony Atkins, Diana Laura is here. And I saw she posted a comment in the chat, let me call on you to make your announcements, thank you.
Hi Pam, and thank you for the town council for having me today. Yes, I posted my information in the chat box, if anyone needs any state-related assistance, believe it or not, we are still assisting folks with unemployment claims. Our office is finally under 100 claims, so hopefully that is a good sign. But I did want to come on and speak on Senator Atkins' bill that she introduced, it's a Senate Bill 1041. This legislation would make permanent the sales tax exemption. For the Navy Marine Corps Relief Society and other qualifying organizations that provide. Financial, educational and other assistance to members of the Armed Forces of the United States, their family members and their survivors. She is a daughter, granddaughter, sister, niece, cousin and aunt of active service members and veterans. So she is aware of the financial sacrifices members of our armed forces make in addition to their service in keeping us safe. So they rely on organizations like the Navy Marine Corps Relief Society to support themselves and their loved ones. So we are very excited to introduce this bill and hopefully would provide relief all over California. But we know how big of a military town San Diego is. And that is all the time I'll take today, thank you.
Thank you so much, Diana, excellent. Well, we are now at the point for where we traditionally do open forum, and we usually at the start of a meeting ask people. Who'd like to sign up for open forum to put their name and comments in the chat. We had such an extended forum on the agenda. We don't really have a lot of time left for any of that, and I'm not really sure. There were anybody who actually signed up for open forum, Jeff, maybe you can help me out looking at the chat. I see.
I haven't seen any, I mean, we could ask anyone who. Still wants to to raise their hands, I see Tommy Lee or Tommy Howe and Kent Lee.
Tommy Howe and Kent Lee, perhaps given the the evening. I would like to simply introduce the two of you to everybody else on this call. As candidates for City Council District Six. And I believe Jane Glasson, who has just raised her hand, is also a candidate. So if you'd each like a minute to personally say say a few things, am I right, Jane? Let's see, Jane needs to be unmuted to speak. Would you each like a minute? I can I can give you each a minute. Yes, okay, so let's 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 un. Can Jane un, Jane, unmute yourself?
Okay, okay, hi, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes, are you, do you also have a camera? I don't see a camera on, if you don't have a camera, you can just speak.
Oh, all right, can you see me now?
Yes, we can see you now.
Okay, thank you very much, I enjoyed the meeting, and I want to say I am a candidate for City Council District Six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, okay, next, alphabetical order, Tommy.
Thanks Pam, I appreciate it, it's great to see Jane here tonight, Tommy Howe, running for San Diego City Council here in District Six. Heard some positive things tonight, I dialed in late on the meeting unfortunately, but I can tell you that I. I first heard about what was going on on Gold Coast Road about two weeks ago, when I was canvassing over on on Flanders. And then I went over there the next day, I spoke with some of my my media contacts about it, and it's it's a shame because. You know, I want to support ways to get people out of their cars and find ways to make it safer for people to ride bicycles around here, but unfortunately, that that lane realignment for all of one block did none of the above. It only put people on a course of having a head-on collision. It made the road unsafe for bicyclists, it made the road unsafe for motorists. And it really defied a lot of rules and regulations that we as motorists have as not driving into bicycle lanes. And it's a shame because we have opportunities to do this right in in Mira Mesa, and this was. This was a great example of doing it wrong and not telling anyone that you were going to do that. Obviously, as your your council member, I will try and run interference on that as best I can, but clearly. Thank you.
Kent, you're on.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and I know it's been a long meeting, so it's just great to see those. Who I haven't met yet, my name is Kent Lee, I'm a 15-year resident here in Mira Mesa, my wife and I are raising our two and four-year-old here. And as many of you might be aware, I'm a candidate for San Diego City Council. I am looking to bring my experience as a local nonprofit leader, but also as a longtime community volunteer right here in Mira Mesa. To just make sure that our voices are represented in the city hall. I think what you've seen from tonight's presentation especially, is just how critical it is that we have. Our, you know, a city that communicates proactively with our community, working with groups like the town council, our planning group, which I. Had the opportunity to serve for the last nine years on, because they are such vital voices for this community, so. We all know our city has a lot of significant work to do to address our ongoing challenges. And I'm looking forward to bringing again my experience from a fiduciary standpoint. Dealing with, you know, many of the issues that we address as a city, so thanks again, and I'll leave some in for the chat, so.
Thank you much. And that is a wonderful opportunity for me to announce to everybody on this call that you will get a chance to hear more from. Jane and Tommy and Kent. If you sign up for the Candidates Forum via Zoom. That is being sponsored by the University City Community Association and the Mira Mesa Town Council and the League of Women Voters. It's, you can register for it, there's an article in the Town Council Newsletter. And it will take place, once you register to attend, then you can submit questions. And it's being run by League of Women Voters under their protocol for doing Candidates Forums, so that's in the works. There is also a tentative Candidates Forum that Mira Mesa Town Council is hoping to hold in person. At Mira Mesa High School on Monday, May, what I put it in the meeting notes, it's May 2nd, right? Am I right, that it's. It looks like it's it's the first Monday in May, in lieu of our regular meeting. Barry is working with Jeff Sabans, the principal of Mira Mesa High School, so it's still a tentative, but after our board meeting next week. Town council members will find out whether the May meeting will actually be that in lieu of our regular meeting. And I believe Barry told me that all the candidates have already said that that's a time that you could be there, am I right? Great, okay, well, moving on to the last few community reports that we've got. Our Town Council Committee reports, Scholarship Committee is Eric Colbeck on the call.
He was here, but it looks like he dropped off.
Okay, Jeff, you want to make the announcement about the scholarship?
Sure, the Town Council gives $3,000 scholarships to graduating seniors each year. The scholarships are based on volunteer work, not academics. And so if you know any students, high school students who have done good volunteer work. Please encourage them to apply for the for the scholarship.
Great, thank you. And next item is a banner district report, Jennifer Kowalvik is the committee chair of our Banner District Committee. Jennifer, are you still here? I know you were here earlier. Possibly not, well, we can keep you up to date on Banner District with an email announcement, but I know that. There are some good things being done with that. And likewise, our treasurer is excused from the meeting tonight, he also works in doing taxes, so. We'll have updated treasurer's report via email or at our next regular meeting. And membership is Yvonne here tonight. I don't think so. At our board meeting, we'll be talking about membership outreach, and one thing Mira Mesa Town Council will be doing for membership outreach. Of course, if we have the Candidates Forum in person, that will also be an opportunity for membership outreach in May. But we are also in May. Tentatively going to do a Mira Mesa Town Council booth at the D six Neighborhoods Fair on Saturday, May 14th. Which is an afternoon event at Mira Mesa Community Park, so that would be an opportunity to. Meet with other people, and I'll encourage all town council members on this call to talk to somebody who isn't already a member. And see what you can get involved with that's a lot of fun, and if there are others on this call that aren't yet town council members. Please join us, you can sign up on the website and become members and. Get involved with all of the good things that we do for the community. April is National Volunteer Month, and. Mira Mesa Town Council is an organization, thanks everyone who volunteers in whatever way, shape. That people are doing it, and with that, I think. I've gotten to the end of the agenda, does anybody else have any other last-minute announcements before we adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, here a second?
Yes.
Okay, we will adjourn at 9:07 PM, thank you all for being part of a wonderful meeting.
Good seeing you everyone tonight, have a good evening.
Good seeing you.